I have a hair out of place.
Okay, you are live.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Let's bring the session of the Town of Groveland zoning board of appeals to order on October 19th at 7:00. With me is Brad Legals, John Grohl, Jason Naves, and myself, Chris Goodwin. Before us tonight, we have application 2023-4, 154 Center Street HKL Realty LLC requesting a special permit in accordance with section 50.5, excuse me, 50.4.5 Tables of Uses of the Groveland zoning bylaw for contractors yard at the premises. Do we have a representative from the applicant?
I do.
Good evening.
Oh, can I get a motion to open the meeting?
Second.
So motion?
Second.
On favor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm Adam Costa. I'm with the firm of Mead, Tallerman, and Costa. I represent the applicant for the contractors yard special permit. Nice to be with you tonight. I guess the first order of business is, as you know, your rules and regulations require notice to parties in interest within 300 feet of the subject property, consistent with the statute, require the applicant to do that and to provide copies of the mailings and the notices to the abutting communities. We have all that information here. I'll provide it to Annie if you could.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, I represent HKL Realty LLC, which is the applicant. Jesse Jalbert, who is the principal of the applicant, is here with me tonight and will be available to ask, to answer any operational questions that the board might ask once I make just an initial presentation to familiarize you with the application and with the site. I also have provided, although you have copies of it in your package, I provided here a full-size plan of the property and of the proposal. You can see that the changes, so to speak, are drawn in red just for added clarity. So this is an existing, I guess I'll call it a former manufacturing facility because it was discontinued in August, just a few months ago, manufacturing facility and warehouse that had employed approximately nine people, had existed for a number of years on the site. The proposal is to convert that former manufacturing facility to a different type of non-residential industrial use, which is a contractors yard. Your zoning bylaw provides a definition for a contractors yard, indicating that it is premises used by a contractor, subcontractor, or other person doing business in construction, landscaping, and related trades for the storage, either indoors or out, vehicles, equipment, tools, supplies, materials, and for fabrication of sub-assemblies. And that's a use that's allowed in the district by special permit, which is what brings us to you with our special permit application. We've consulted in advance of making application with the town administrator and, of course, with your building commissioner to discuss the proposal for the site and to get confirmation of zoning applicability and just to run the concept of our proposal by those officials. But obviously, this board is the special permit granting authority and has the discretion to grant the permit. So we presented to you in the correspondence, if you turn to the letter that my partner, Lisa Mead, provided to the board, we've provided some detailed information about the proposed use. So the new use is going to be a contractors yard for use by the applicant and also by any additional lessies of the building that would operate the same type of use at the site. There is proposed to be a maximum of five employees at the site at any one time, which, of course, is less than the nine employees, excuse me, the seven employees that were employed at the facility previously. The approximate area is not going to change in terms of internal storage. We're not proposing any change to the building. We're not proposing any addition of bathrooms to the building that would trigger needs, for example, for Board of Health approvals. We're not doing anything of that sort. The building will remain the same. We're also not proposing any change to an existing storage structure that you can see on the northeast corner of the site. It's in somewhat poor condition, but it's, for the time being, going to remain as is. What we are proposing to do, however, is to make a few improvements to the site, just to the overall layout. The first is we're going to better designate the location of the parking spaces. Right now, and as I understand it, in previous years, in connection with the former manufacturing use, it's sort of been helter-skelter in terms of where people park. They park wherever they choose to park. There is an area of a bituminous concrete driveway, but then it quickly sort of fades into a gravel area on the site, both of which are marked here on the plan. So the idea is to better designate the location of where the parking will occur. You can see that we've got a total of nine spaces that are delineated here on the plan. There is plenty of adequate space elsewhere on the site to park vehicles and, of course, to park equipment and associated with, and associated with and in connection with the contractors that will be utilizing the site. We've also designated an area, at least an initial area, that Mr. Jalbert and his company intends to use for proposed dumpsters and trucks. You can see that area here on the plan is designated sort of in the northwest corner, just south of the existing storage structure. There is a proposal as well to utilize in the future, depending upon the tendencies at this particular building, exterior space marked as gravel here. In fact, it's marking two locations as gravel, situated directly to the east of the concrete driveway and parking areas for additional storage in the future, as may become necessary in connection with the additional lessies of the building. But again, we don't know the extent to which the building is going to be tenanted and how much outdoor storage will be needed. I think what's important to note is that this property is generally surrounded by other industrial properties and importantly is shielded from Center Street. So you can see here that we have designated on the site not only the existing zoning setback, but we've shown that the entire area at the front of the site is generally woods, with the exception of the curb cut for the driveway. And you can see the gate providing access to the site. So generally speaking, in terms of visibility from Center Street, there is an existing screen or buffer from the industrial use to the roadway. And then again, you can see you've got town land in one location, and then you've got two locations, and then you've got another industrial property situated to the west of the site. I won't bore you by reading verbatim or by going through each of the six criteria in your zoning bylaw for the issuance of a special permit, but as we do with every application we make to special permit granting authorities, we walk through those in our narrative and explain why we believe that this is consistent with those standards. Economic and community needs being served by a proposal like this. It's in an appropriate location for this sort of a use, as has been determined by virtue of being allowed by special permit. Through your zoning bylaws, we don't believe there's going to be any traffic concerns associated with the use, given its location and given its history of use, and the fact that, if anything, the number of vehicles coming and going from the site may be reduced from what has been existing for years. Utilities already exist on site. No adverse impacts to the natural environment. I will note, and I suspect board members may have seen it, that there has been some feedback from a couple of different boards, commissions, departments of the town, including the Board of Health. And the Board of Health commented specifically on the area of the septic you can see there in the northwest corner of the site, pointed out here for your approximate existing septic system. So this is an existing system. The existing system is not going to be affected by the change of use because, again, we're not altering the number of bathrooms in the existing facility. But the intention is to connect to sewer when that becomes available to the site, and we expect that will be in relatively short order. When that occurs, we recognize, and this was pointed out by the Board of Health, although we had discussed it and were aware of it in advance, we recognize that we'll need approval at that time. We'll need to connect to the system, and then we'll need to discontinue and remove the existing septic tank from the site. And we'll seek the appropriate approvals at that time when we're ready to make the transition. We've also provided a supplemental correspondence to the board in response to that comment from the Board of Health, saying that in the interim, for as long as we continue to use the existing septic system on site prior to our connection to sewer, we won't be storing anything and won't permit our tenants to store anything in the area of the existing septic system. So you're not going to have a circumstance where you've got vehicles or equipment or materials being stored on top of the septic system. We won't conduct any storage in that specific area of the site. One other topic that I'll touch upon, because, again, it's in the correspondence you've received, is we received a comment from Sam Jocelyn. He had said specifically, "The applicant indicates that it will store vehicles, trucks, over the 10K G V W on a temporary basis within the building. I am fine with it so long as it is after hours and there's nobody in the building. I would also like to know how long temporary is before approving." And so there were representations that there are new vehicles that my client has purchased that are being stored temporarily in the building. He'd like to continue to store those temporarily in the building until the site is secure, so as to not compromise the security of these new vehicles. We don't anticipate any issues with leakage or whatnot from the vehicles. They are brand new. But again, Sam's concern was, you know, what's temporary? And I think he said in a separate email, or maybe it was the fire department, that said, "Temporary has a tendency to become never-ending," which we can certainly appreciate. So we're happy to accept the condition of approval if the board is inclined to approve the special permit that limits the term of storage. My client tells me that realistically, he needs about three months of storage on that site before he can then commit to removing and no longer storing the vehicles inside the building. That's the application that we've submitted in a nutshell. Again, I'm happy to answer any additional questions that board members might have. And if they relate to the operations or intended operations at the site, I'll likely defer to my client to help answer those questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board before we go to public comment?
I've got a ton of questions. How many trucks?
Well, right now, probably five or six.
All over 33 G V W, 33,000 G V W?
No, there's six of them would be under, there'd be 14, five G V W. And then there's two that are 26,000 and 33,000.
How many 33,000 CDLs?
There's two.
Will they be on paving or will they be parked on gravel?
On gravel, on the gravel.
Are you anticipating putting fencing around the dumpsters, the vehicles?
Yep, eventually for added screening and security purposes.
What zone is this aquifer? Zone 1, 2, or 3? Any of those? Is this zone 1, 2, or 3? Aquifer. When the septic's removed, how many more trucks are you going to bring in?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you. It would depend on how many people we rent spots to in there. I don't know the answer to that.
So the plan is...
As quantities go, but it's, the plan would be to, you know, our vehicles that we have as well as potential other tenants.
So you're going to use it as a storage yard, potentially, or?
Contractors yard, to, you know, people have one or two pieces of equipment, and then, yeah.
You note that no more than five people would be allowed on the premise at the same time, but I'm curious to see how you're going to control that if you're going to be subleasing out portions of the building?
Well, as far as five go at the exact same time, I mean, it would be, employees would come, put their cars in the spot where the trucks are, and then leave with their trucks or their equipment or whatever, you know, whatever the renting spots.
But if you have multiple businesses leasing out portions of the property, are you going to limit how many people each business can have on site at the same time, or?
I would only, you know, rent to somebody that had one or two people. It's not, there's definitely not going to be a lot of people.
Could you walk me through a little bit? I don't really understand the dumpster business, and I understand that's one of the uses that you have intended for this property. So if you could walk me through that a little bit.
Yeah, dumpster business is just, you know, we'd offer dumpster rentals for our customers and leave it at their house, and then we would have empty dumpsters stored at the yard.
Okay, so no, there's no actual rubbish or trash or anything that comes back to the yard?
There could be at the end of the day. If they pick up a load and the facilities are closed, they would sit on the truck and then get emptied the next day.
Okay. And does that happen regularly, or?
It could, yeah. It's if the recycling facilities close at, you know, 3 through 4 o'clock and the driver misses it, it would happen.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So if that happens, how would you contain the runoff, you know, protect the aquifer? It rains, you don't know what's in there, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I want business, but you also have to protect, you know, where you are.
Yep, no, totally, totally understand that. You know, we, for the most part, know what, when the customer rents a dumpster, what's going in there. Do we know exactly what's in there? Not, you know, no. But we, you know, tell people it can't be anything hazardous, and we would get in trouble emptying it as well. So we make sure, you know, people follow the rules and then...
People think that latex paint is hazardous, and they just throw them, you know?
Yeah, we don't allow...
Blaming, they don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we don't allow paint in dumpsters. Yeah, if you have somebody that puts it in trash bags and, you know, throws some in there, yeah. But I can tell you, we've never had paint dripping out of a truck on a ground, so.
Well, I'd even be concerned not so much about the paint, too, but, you know, it could be construction material, like, and like that, right? You know, when water flows through there, it picks up every little piece.
Well, household materials, you know, garbage, you know?
So I guess my concern is, you know, holding waste for any amount of time is kind of outside of the scope of a contractors yard. You're getting into a transfer station or an open-air contractors yard or something beyond the scope of just a simple contractors yard. And I don't think, we understand it's partially an industrial zone, but we also know that that street, right across the street, has houses, and you're talking about potentially waste, you know, being there, kept for indeterminate amount of time. That's a concern to me.
Okay. So if I could ask the board, is the suggestion that you would want the applicant to commit to, I guess, I'll ask my question in two parts. First, to in some way secure these dumpsters to the extent that they're not empty dumpsters in a temporary fashion to ensure that there's no leakage, to ensure that there's no pollution of the grounds where they're proposed to be temporarily stored. And then, secondly, or additionally or separately, is the board suggesting that, you know, we should, we should commit or the board could condition a permit on a limitation on the extent of time for which storage could occur? So we don't have a circumstance where, and I don't think it, I know it's not my client's business plan, but you've got, you know, a dumpster that can't be delivered to the recycling facility at 4:00 PM, it's brought on site, and then it sits there for two weeks before it's actually relocated. So, you know, is the board suggesting that these are the sorts of conditions it wants us to discuss and potentially explore with the board?
Well, I mean, I don't even know the time period of, say, like, two weeks, like you mentioned. It can't just be a heavy rain. If we had a rain like we had the other night, I mean, that's plenty enough water flowing through potentially to carry stuff out of the dumpster where the dumpster's full and, you know, the water just passing through. It doesn't necessarily need to be two weeks, it can just be overnight.
I think a remedy, and, you know, we'd have to know what the impervious surface is, you know, what's a 50% industrials, I believe it's 50% impervious surface in the industrial zone. Probably some kind of paving with a Cape Cod berm and some weed containing, you know, and it hazards, you know, something on that guideline and...
And I guess, you know, to sort of limit the extent of paving, not only so as to not maximize the requirements of the bylaw, but also to limit costs, I suppose that what we can do, and I haven't, going out on a limb here because I haven't discussed it with my client, is, you know, designate a portion of the site where the storage would occur because it doesn't sound like these would be concerns you would have with maybe the more traditional type contractors yard usage. So when it comes to the storage of other materials that are not hazardous materials or the parking of other sorts of equipment or whatnot, there are no concerns there. Their concerns are with these dumpsters that might come on site that would be temporarily stored there, even overnight, that might be full of unknown materials. So if we could designate a specific area of the site, it wouldn't necessarily need to be especially a large area of the site, where we could provide some form of impervious surface with some containment mechanism, be it Cape Cod berm or something else.
The, you know, this is going to happen. It always does. Take last year, it's going to rain, you're going to go to, it's going to freeze. You're not going to get everything out of that dumpster. It's just a fact. I mean, you know, as far as using the use of a contractors yard, people putting containers out there and, you know, don't want it so it's an eyesore of the residents either. It's a twofold thing. I get it, you're in the industrial zone, but there's houses around, trust me. Nobody knows better than I do. So, you know, how do you protect the aesthetic, you know, view away from the neighbors? Because that's going to come up. Contractors putting containers in, as long as it's not hazardous materials being stored. I think we can come up with a plan for something like that. And just normal, everyday-use trucks is okay, but once you start in the CDL, and once you start with the dumpsters, we've got to have some kind of a plan for containment. Does that make sense?
Yes, and we can certainly, you know, subject to further discussion amongst the board and opening up the public hearing, we can certainly, if the board is inclined to continue the discussion about a potential approval with those sorts of conditions, then I can consult with my client, be it tonight or between meetings, to discuss, you know, what we could offer to the board that is, you know, both financially sound from the applicant's perspective, but also provides the board with the protections that it desires for the neighborhood.
Are you using that now?
Yep. I had asked if we could use it while we were going through the, sorry, I had asked if we could use it while we were going through the permit process, just because our lease was ended at our other spot that we were at.
And Sam was all right with that?
While we're, as long as we're going through the process.
Okay.
Sorry, just one last question here. On the proposed site map, you have this one area that's proposed for truck, the dumpsters and the truck parking. So that's not inclusive of the nine proposed parking spots, right? So that site is going to be big enough for the five to six trucks plus the dumpsters?
So that was the intention, was to identify, and again, I, maybe I wasn't as, didn't say, stated as eloquently as I could have in my initial presentation, but the intention was to identify, at least in connection with my client's proposed use of the site, based upon his business operations as described in the correspondence, to identify where vehicles would park for access to, his vehicles would park for access to the building itself, and then where he would store dumpsters and his vehicles. We intended then to utilize the general gravel area to the exclusion of what is marked as bituminous concrete and to the exclusion of what's marked as the existing septic for future storage of not proposed dumpsters or trucks, but for storage in connection with other tenants of the facility that would need outdoor storage for their materials or for their equipment.
Do you have an approximate size of this proposed site that's marked on the plan for?
You know, I think we had an estimate somewhere in the paperwork, but we didn't draw the dimensions in the plan, but I can get dimensions, I mean, the plan is done to scale, so I can get dimensions for you as to what that approximate area is.
Ballpark?
Do you recall?
I, off the top of my head, I'm not 100% sure. I know, I can do some quick math on it, but...
I mean, I'm just asking because that site looks, you know, if you're talking about five to six trucks plus dumpsters, that looks tight.
Right. There's a lot of space over there, yeah.
I think we should drive in and take a look. I mean, that'd be, it's hot on people.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, you'd be like, well, it's bigger than you think.
Yeah.
I just want to note that if anything gets paved or any changes to the site like that, it may require a conservation review because it would be changing the impervious surface, which most of the site is within jurisdictional wetlands. So changing anything like that with the site would probably be subject to an RDA, at least with the Conservation Commission. Just putting my conservation agent hat on, taking the zoning one off, just something to consider.
Sure, and that's understood. You know, if we needed to submit an RDA to the Conservation Commission for them to determine that there'd be no adverse effects, you know, we may also look more closely at where we would designate that location for proposed dumpsters and trucks. Maybe it wouldn't be exactly as proposed here if that's, you know, in a location that would not be as favorable from a Conservation Commission perspective. So we can look at that as well.
Any other questions from the board before we open to the public?
That area appears to be approximately 40 by 50, based on the scale.
Thank you. At this point, we'd like to open up a public comment.
How you doing? Name's Corey LeBlanc. Live at 157 Center Streets, and I'm directly across from the proposed new dumpster company. I guess, I'm not a lawyer, but I'll do my best to counter some of these points that are brought up. As far as traffic goes, there's already a higher inflow of traffic. The dumpsters are coming in and out of there. I don't know what the operating hours are, but they're coming in late at night, they're coming in during the day. I work from home, so I see it every day. You have a bus stop right there for high school and elementary that they're bombing right by. So that's definitely one concern. Second, you know, neighborhood characteristics and social structure. So, I don't know, I mean, I don't want a dumpster company across the street from me. That's pretty plain. But you can hear them, you can see them. I'm worried about smell, rodents, you know, all that stuff that could potentially come with the dumpster being on site. So that's definitely a concern of mine. And then environmental impacts, you have a wetland right there. I mean, the dumpsters are lined up and trucks are lined up right next to a wetland area. So that's a major concern, as well as, you know, we already had a well issue in that area and a superfund site. I had to go through a lot of paperwork just to get my house, proving that it wasn't an issue. So, yeah, that's my points on it. So thank you for having me.
Thank you. Other comments?
Hi, Joe Vitale. I live in Atwood Lane. So I want to thank the board. I think a lot of my concerns, you guys already kind of addressed and asked a question, so I appreciate you guys, you know, thinking that same way. So again, I am to echo some of Corey's. I also disagree with Mr. Cost's. One of his comments that, I think it's in section four in the memo, that says, "By and large, the neighborhood is industrial and commercial district." I feel like, and you kind of brought up, it's not just that. There's lots of residential there. It's not, by and large, there's three businesses there and, you know, 50 houses around the neighborhood. So, I know, I disagree with that comment. You know, the memo states the number of vehicles and people, but you guys already kind of pulling that thread. There'll be a lot more than five people and five vehicles there. There'll be a lot more than what's in the actual memo. We have the new rail trail there. I think this will impact that dumpsters, making those turns off of School Street down to Center Street. You've got the crosswalk right there. I think that'll be impacted. I think that'd be negative. I know we have done landscaping in the tow truck and anchor and the other business there, but they've been in the community for a while. I think they drive slow, they kind of go through the neighborhood, they know everyone there. So I don't have problems with them, but the additional traffic, I think, would be an issue. And then also the renting of space, right? I mean, you can have commitments from, and again, you know, no issues with someone having a business, but commitments from the business owner, but you rented somebody and they don't know what the commitments are, what if they store something. Talk about hazard chemicals, what if they're a landscaper and they're storing oil and gas, you know, not properly, right? And that might leach into it. So how do you, how do you police that? And I guess my last, maybe it's more of a question, I'm not sure if math, that's a question, but I know in there it kind of said that, you know, this special permits required because it's industrial. I know the property is though and so in both residential and industrial, and my question is, why does it default to industrial, not residential? I know the previous company was light manufacturing, which is permitted industrial, but contractors yard is special permit. So I feel like you want to err on the side of it's more residential than industrial because of special permits required. So I don't know if, you know, what, like, how you make a determination that you err on industrial versus residential.
I think anything in the aquifer is special, is special permit.
Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, thank you. At this point, we will close the public comment. Open up a board discussion. What do we think? Do we think we'd be beneficial to take a look at the site?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I drove by there today, but it would be much more beneficial if we did it as a
Yeah, agreed.
I'm sorry, I'm just...
I said, do we want to take a look at the site?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think a truck, you know, how fast are they going?
I mean, they're coming in at a pretty good rate of speed. You know, they're coming in quick to drop, you know, it's loud, it's obnoxious. And then, there's definitely times where I've seen them come in with a full load and they're leaving with the truck to go get another dumpster or whatever, whatever they're doing. But, I'm sorry, thank you.
I would think that they can only wheel in so fast.
They're coming in pretty hot. I mean, I don't have a, you know, speedometer, but it's definitely, they're coming in fast and they're leaving fast, you know? They're trying to get to the next site. But, and there's a lot of kids, there's no sidewalks right there. We have Atwood that just came up with a lot of kids that are coming down the street to play with other kids. So it's concerning.
I think we should swing by and table.
Yeah, I agree. All right, so do we have to have a motion to table this application until the next meeting so we can allow the board time to do an official site visit?
So motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Okay, appreciate your time tonight. We'll take into consideration the other comments that the board members made and try to have additional information for you at your next public hearing. What's the date on that continuance?
So it would be the first Wednesday in November? I'm not sure what the actual date is, right?
Sorry, my calendar's coming up. I would like to note, though, that, so the first Wednesday of November is the second, but I would like to note that this room will be occupied for voting.
Oh.
Everyone vote. So we will be, if most likely, in the Public Safety Building. So the location will be to be determined. Of course, we'll post everything within 48 hours of when the meeting will be, and you can always email me. My information's online under the Zoning Board, Planning Board, and the Economic Development Department and Conservation Commission. But if its first choice is Public Safety and it can't be, if it can't be at Public Safety, it would most likely potentially be at VZ Park in their boardroom. their boardroom. That's kind of the last resort option, but again, it will be posted in a timely manner, so you know where it would be. But it will not be here. Early voting will be, will be here.
And so, I just have one other question for the board. You mentioned making a site visit. I appreciate that, under the revised open meeting law, that's not a session of the public hearing. It's not a public meeting. You can do it as a board. Do you want to coordinate that with the applicant? Do you want to choose a time? Will you notify us of that time?
No, I would ask the applicant to coordinate with the town planner's office, and then she'll coordinate with us.
Okay, we'll go ahead, we'll go ahead and do that. Be sure that that can occur between now and the second.
My hours are crazy. I would just like permission if I can fly in, take a look, and then get eyes on it myself. I, God only knows when, and he's not telling.
Yeah, that's fine, and then I'll coordinate.
All right, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Question to the board about this, is the applicant...
Are they going to be able to continue to operate while these issues are unresolved?
Andy, can we check with Sam about what the extent of?
I'll have to check with the zoning enforcement officer on that and what the requirements were surrounding that decision of his.
Yeah, thank you, just curious.
I would probably caution the applicant, if there are drivers in excess speeding, they may want to tail it down. You, listen...
I talk to them all the time, so, not that I know if they're speeding, but I would say, go slow. It's a new neighborhood for us, and so, they're aware.
Put a camera out there.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to the next item, approval of minutes from the October 13th, 2022 meeting. Does everyone have a chance to review?
Yep.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, passes. Any other business quickly before we?
Nothing.
All right.
Just next meeting.
All right, I would like to...
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Take a motion to adjourn at 7:34. So motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks. Wish you success.